Hello, everyone. For the perchlorate hearing this morning, we are going to get started in about five or so minutes. We're just making sure that the folks that are wanting to comment and entering the Zoom meeting are able to do so and be identified. So hang tight, we'll be back in a few minutes.
For the two. For the two participants that we just admitted into the Zoom meeting with the name of Chris and Steve, can you please send an email to us to identify who you are? Because we do not have you on the list as speakers. So for those that are on the Zoom meeting with the name of Chris and Steve, can you please identify yourself and send us an email of who you are? Thank you.
All right, we're going to get started. Welcome, everyone. The Division of Drinking Water has proposed amending their perchlorate detection limit for purposes of reporting, otherwise known as DLR, to two parts per billion, or 0.002 milligrams per liter, and reinstating definitions for possible contaminating activity and source water assessment. The purpose of today's public hearing is to receive public comments regarding the proposed regulations. Today's hearing will begin with presentations by Drinking Water staff consisting of background information and a brief overview of the proposed regulations. Following the presentation, we will begin receiving your public comments. We ask that comments be kept to no more than four minutes in length to help ensure that everyone interested in commenting is afforded that opportunity. Please understand that today's hearing is an opportunity for you, the public, to provide oral comments on the regulations in a public forum. If you do not wish to provide your comments orally, you may also submit written comments today. Or if you haven't already, you may submit your written comments following the instructions provided in the notice of proposed rulemaking. The purpose of this hearing is for the public to provide oral comments, not for state water board staff to provide responses, although it may do so. Regardless, state water board staff will respond to all of your comments in subsequent regulation documents, which will be made available to the public. The state water board will not be taking any action on the proposed regulations today. The adoption of the regulations by the state water board is currently anticipated to occur on June 16, 2020, but may vary depending on whether comments lead to revisions to the proposed regulations. If revisions are made, the public will be provided an opportunity to comment on the revisions. I also want to let you know that this meeting is being webcast and recorded, so please speak clearly. In order to comply with public gathering limitations and physical distancing requirements, and as authorized by the governor's executive orders, there is no physical meeting room. For people who only want to listen or watch the meeting, the state water board's customary webcast is available at video.caliopa.ca.gov. In addition, we are receiving presentations and public comment through a Zoom meeting platform. If you intend to present or comment, or think you might be interested in commenting, you should already be in the Zoom meeting room using the meeting ID provided on the board's website and the password you received from a regulatory development unit. If you have not already received a password, you can email the unit Include "perchlorate DLR speaker" comment in the subject line, so unit staff can follow up with you. For those in the Zoom meeting, you will be on mute and your camera turned off until it is your turn to speak. The meeting moderator will then unmute you and ask you to turn on your camera, if you have one. When you are done speaking, you will be placed on mute and your camera turned off. You can remain in the Zoom meeting until the completion of your item, and then may choose to exit the meeting or continue. Please note that to maintain the integrity of the meeting, several Zoom features, including the chat function, have been turned off for this workshop. For those watching through the webcast or Zoom, staff have included information regarding internet-available documents in the presentation. If you would like to submit written comments regarding the proposed regulations, they must be submitted to the board clerk no later than 12 noon on Friday, May 1. Oral comments provided during today's public hearing will be recorded and included in final documents. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation by Dr. Eric Miguelino, Research Scientist 4 for the Division of Drinking Water's Regulatory Development Unit. Here's Eric.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eric Miguelino. I'm a Research Scientist in the Regulatory Development Unit in the Division of Drinking Water. I want to thank you very much for joining this webcast and giving me the opportunity to present our proposed regulations to revise the perchlorate detection limit for purposes of reporting, also known as a DLR, to 2 ppb. Our proposed regulation package has a major and a minor component. The major component of a regulation is revised, is the revised DLR, which is what most of the presentation will focus on. The minor component of the regulation is the reincorporation of two definitions that were deleted from the repeal of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. That's DWSRF regulations with the adoption of the DWSRF policy handbook. I'm going to start with the overview of the perchlorate DLR proposal. Okay, before I begin, I'd like to make some clarifications on the units of measurements that I will be using in this presentation. Ppb is defined as parts per billion. 1 ppb is equal to 0.001 milligrams per liter. Within our rulemaking documentation, these units of measurements are used interchangeably. But for the purpose of this presentation, I will be using ppb, parts per billion. In Title 22 of the California Code of Regulations, Section 64400.34, "Detection Limit for Purposes of Reporting (DLR)" means the designated minimum level at or above which any analytical finding of a contaminant in drinking water resulting from monitoring required under this chapter shall be reported to the state board. Basically, this is a level of precision that is required by of a laboratory that reports water quality data to the state board. Now, there are a few main sources of perchlorate. It comes from manufacturing, for which it's used as a propellant for rockets and missiles. It's also used in fireworks and found in some imported fertilizers. It's found in cleanup sites due to the improper waste disposal of perchlorate. The path towards regulation in California began when the Office of Health Hazard and Assessment, or OIA, established a six-part-per-billion public health goal in 2006. The following year, the state adopted a six-part-per-billion maximum contamination level, or MCL, with a DLR of 4 ppb. This met the statutory mandate to establish the MCL as close as feasible to the public health goal. In 2015, OIA revised the public health goal to 1 ppb. The revision of the public health goal established a material different risk to public health than was previously determined, and this prompted the review of the perchlorate MCL. To protect public health, California law in Health and Safety Code subsections 116, 365 A and B requires the state board to adopt the primary drinking water standards, including maximum contaminant levels for contaminants at levels as close as feasible to the corresponding PHGs, placing primary emphasis on the protection of public health and to the extent that is technologically and economically feasible. Our preliminary review demonstrated a lack of occurrence data below the current DLR of 4 ppb, which was due to a technological limitation. This limitation impacted the ability to identify water sources with very low levels of perchlorate, the ability to evaluate any additional performance benefits from existing treatment, and the inability to consider revising the MCL to below 4 ppb. Therefore, the state water board directed the Division of Drinking Water staff to revise the DLR. Data gathered from the monitoring data using the proposed DLR would allow for improved ability to evaluate the technological and economic feasibility to reduce perchlorate levels in drinking water. Now, I'm going to continue with the regulatory development of the revised DLR. About technological capability and capacity. The Division of Drinking Water collaborated with the Environmental Laboratory Technical Advisory Committee to develop a survey for, at that time, 50 accredited labs. It was designated to determine performance capability and their capacity to support statewide testing of perchlorate. I'm going to walk you through this process and fill in these blanks. The Environmental Laboratory Accreditation Program, also known as ELAP, accredits labs for four of these methods for perchlorate. Method 314.0, method 331.0, and 332.0, and method 314.1. For method 314.0, we found that 84% of the labs could detect a 2 ppb. Therefore, we determined that, yes, there was adequate capacity of availability of lab services for statewide testing of perchlorate. For method 331 and 332, 22% of the labs could detect a 1 ppb. Unfortunately, these methods were not considered because the capacity did not exist, and so we had to disregard this alternative. For method 314, this was dropped from consideration because for the six years of data we gathered, the method had very low usage. The lab capacity was only 4%. Therefore, there wasn't adequate capacity. So at this point, we focused on EPA method 314.0. How is cost estimated? Well, a lower DLR will result in more detections. New detections will trigger sampling four times a year. And just a note, routine surface water sampling occurs once a year. Routine groundwater sampling occurs once every three years. Therefore, the additional source sampling and testing costs are the basis for the cost impact. Water systems already performing increased monitoring based on prior detections of perchlorate are not expected to incur any additional costs. Currently, there are approximately 350 water sources that are already on increased monitoring schedules. How did we identify additional impacted sources? We assume that drinking water sources nearest to sources with known detections of perchlorate were most likely to have new detections of perchlorate if the DLR were to be lowered. For this regulation, the estimate was based on counties that had one or more sources with perchlorate levels detected above the current DLR of 4 ppb. Based on the water quality monitoring data from January 1, 2012, to April 27, 2018, there were 27 sources, 27 counties identified. Those are marked in blue, that had at least one detection of perchlorate above the DLR. And within those counties, there is a total of 7,194 drinking water sources belonging to 2,346 community water systems and non-transient, non-community water systems. For cost calculations, we assumed all of the 7,194 sources would require four sample tests per year. So what is the laboratory cost? We focused on EPA method 314.0. From another survey, the labs indicated a cost range of $40 to $72 per analysis. The average was $56. The calculation for statewide cost is as follows. $56 per sample, four samples per source, equals $224 per source annually. $224 times the total number of affected sources, 7,194, equals a total of $1.6 million per year for all the impacted sources. So what is the final cost estimate? From the previous slide, we estimate that each impacted source will incur an annual cost of $224. This means the impact on a public water system is based on the number of impacted sources it has multiplied times $224. The annual cost for an individual was calculated by distributing that cost amongst the number of individuals that public water system serves. The state board took a conservative approach on estimating a final cost per individual. Since the majority of water systems, approximately 51%, had only one source, we used $224 as an annual cost per system. Since a public water system is defined as serving at least 25 people, we used it as the smallest population over which to distribute costs, as it would incur the most conservative cost estimate. Therefore, by dividing 224 by 25 people, we derived an annual cost per individual of approximately $9 per year. Minor component of this regulation is the incorporation of lost definitions. The State Revolving Fund, SRF, regulations contained in CCR Title 22, Division 4, Chapter 12, were repealed in 2014 with the adoption of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund handbook. Two definitions were deleted since the entire chapter was repealed, and they were not incorporated in the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund handbook. The issue is that these definitions are referenced in other sections of the regulations. For clarity, we are reincorporating the definitions for possible contaminating activity and source water assessment back into the regulations. I put this slide up for your reference. I'm not going to read it, but this is the original text of the definitions that were repealed and that we propose to reincorporate them in the regulations for completeness and clarity. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to present our proposed regulation package. Information on the regulatory package and rulemaking documents can be found at the following web address on the first bullet. If you need clarifications on the presentation, my information is located on the second bullet. But if you want to send in written comments, the written comment deadline is 12 noon on Friday, May 1, 2020. They may be submitted as follows. Although the notice of proposed rulemaking includes an option for the hand delivery of comments, it is recommended to submit by one of the following methods listed on this slide, so we can facilitate the timely review of your written comment. I want to thank you again, and I think we are ready to receive oral comment.
Thank you, Eric. So for oral comments, we have Andrea Ventura from the Clean Water Action. So Andrea, I'm going to unmute you, and you can start your video if you prefer. So you're live.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to pull up my comments so that I don't waste your time. So thank you for having me. I am the Toxics Program Manager for Clean Water Action. And I come to this hearing with over a decade of working on perchlorate. I worked, I was involved in the public processes that established both the original and the subsequent PHG for this chemical, the MCL of six parts per billion that we have today. And I have worked very closely as part of a community group in the communities of Oregon Hills, San Martin, and Gilroy for over a decade on their perchlorate issues. And I'm very concerned about the choice that was made today. We have, we seem to have moved away from the thinking that permeated MCLs in the past, in fact, in terms of this very chemical. The ultimate goal was to set an MCL at the public health goal when it was economically and technically feasible. That's why it's called a public health goal. And that's because the goal is to protect everyone that we can. And the PHG for perchlorate now is one part per billion. That is just one part per billion lower than what is being proposed here as the detection limit. And we believe that that is what the detection limit should be, one part per billion. Now, in the case of perchlorate, there is no technical barrier. We know, because we just heard that some labs can see down to one part per billion. In fact, I did my own survey of experts working on this issue around the country. You know, just an anecdotal survey, and most of them say they're seeing far below that. And so there is no technological barrier. The technology exists, but by this proposal of two parts per billion, we are creating a barrier to ever considering the possibility of revising the MCL to the PHG. We are ensuring that the detection limit is higher than that. In other words, the board is creating the barrier. Now, a lower detection limit and potential lower MCL in the future will not impact communities with water being treated now. Okay, if you're treating down to six, you're probably getting most of your perchlorate out, certainly getting to a non-detect or very, very low levels. Why this matters is to ensure that all communities with water at or above that we would not expect significant health impacts would be captured and thus protected. And we have to push the envelope, okay? We contend that while the majority of labs that the board identified may currently be set up to detect two parts per billion, that's because they don't need to see any lower. They're not being asked to. So if we establish a detection limit of one, the technology will follow. And even as the document drafted by staff admitted, it might even provide a business growth opportunity as labs expand their opportunity. So this is a market issue. I want to end by addressing the cost issue. To be clear, as an organization, Clean Water Action has been involved in solutions for disadvantaged communities that may be stressed by further monitoring. We work on the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund. We worked on consolidation opportunities for the board. This is something we take very seriously. But there are two things missing in the cost estimating methodology in this proposal. First is that there is no analysis of the cost to ratepayers, not only to ratepayers, but to local government and education systems due to children with learning and physical disabilities. That is the problem with perchlorate. That is the health impact of perchlorate. So where are the healthcare costs of dealing with children with these problems? I have a friend who lives in Gilroy with a disabled child, drank perchlorate. The costs over her life have been in the hundreds of thousands to the state and to the county for her care. There is also no pollution pay consideration here. In the communities I work in, oil incorporation was at the table. They were held responsible for providing alternate water, putting treatment on public water systems, and even private wells, stopping for the contamination and studying the plume, and now they're pumping and treating. So we need to get to the right detection limit so that we can bring polluters to the table, that we can hold them to the proper cleanup requirements, and so that we can drive the technology in the state that will rise to the occasion, and we can protect all people. So Clean Water Action, our members, do not agree with two parts per billion. We think it should be one part per billion so that we protect all Californians. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. So for our next speaker, we're going to be hearing from David Kimbrough from the Pasadena Water and Power Company. And David, I have just unmuted you and you can start your video if you prefer.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's David Kimbrough. I am the Water Quality Manager for City of Pasadena Water and Power Department. I wanted to speak in favor of this proposed regulation. Mainly, I think the main point we'd like to make is we'd like the process that was involved. The division worked with the laboratory community to determine the capacity. It was a, it worked through the Environmental Laboratory Technical Advisory Committee, which created a subcommittee or task force which worked with industry and with environmental divisions within the State Board. And I think they came with a good process to help determine what this number should be. It's important to note that the objective was to have not just a few laboratories that were able to make a certain detection limit, but enough laboratories that could accurately and precisely measure down to the DLR so that all data users who needed the laboratory capacity would be available. It's true that we could, our number of labs can go much lower and produce accurately. Our laboratory can, but we need enough laboratories with that capacity to support all activity. So this was a very good approach to look at both accuracy of data analysis, precision, and overall laboratory capacity. I would like to note that in terms of cost compliance that the DLR has an impact on routine operations. We currently have a facility to remove perchlorate. We have to change our IR and exchange resin every time we detect perchlorate at the top of the resin. So if we were to lower the MCL down to two or one, we would then triple our costs. We'd have to change out the resins much more quickly. So this is not a zero cost issue or strictly a laboratory issue, but ultimately this could impact those of us who are already treating it and increase our costs considerably. With that, I'd like to thank the board for this moment to give a presentation and like to support their efforts on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, David. So next, we're going to be hearing from Bill Alayad from the Environmental Working Group. And Bill, I've just unmuted you.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Good. Hi, I'm Bill Alio, California Director of Government Affairs for the Environmental Working Group here in Sacramento. EWG has had longstanding concerns about perchlorate and public health goals. We support Oihaw's determination of a one-part-per-billion of a public health goal and understand limitations in labs and economic costs are a consideration. We went through the Hex Chrome thing, which is still ongoing. But we're really concerned about exposure to populations, especially the most vulnerable, pregnant women, their children, infants, to these chemicals. And so we're urging that this level be set below the recommended two parts per billion and down to one part per billion. We think it's feasible and necessary just to protect public health at a relatively small cost compared to the potential health costs if we continue to have this toxic chemical at levels which cause cancers and other endocrine disruption in the body. So that's our position right now as we urge an adoption of a one-part-per-billion detection level. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Bill. Next, we're going to be hearing from Hyvon Nguyen from the San Gabriel Valley Water Company. And Hyvon, I've just unmuted you and you can start your video if you prefer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Hyvan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I actually do not have any further comments about the presentation. I have worked in the lab industry for quite some time and just recently switched over to the drinking water, San Gabriel. And the lab reporting limit of two parts per billion has been implemented for quite some time and laboratories are able to meet this limit and I support this. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we're going to be hearing from Shay Bachman from the Bachman Water Company. Shay, you should be unmuted now.
All right, we have no comment at this time, but we'll be submitting written comment.
And is that for the whole Bachman Water Company team that's in the meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Next, we'll be hearing from Kurt Chambers from Maxwell PUD. And Kurt, you should be unmuted. If you're speaking, we can't hear you. So we're going to come back to Kurt, maybe having some problems with his mic. All right, I don't see anyone else on our list. We're going to try and go back to Kurt one more time. If anyone else from the webcast that's watching this would like to submit a public comment, please send us an email at ddwregunit@waterboards.ca.gov in the subject indication perchlorate DLR, and we will admit you to the meeting. We're going to go back to Kurt one more time. Kurt, I've just unmuted your mic. So we're still unable to hear Kurt. At this point, we're going to take a short break Thanks, everyone, for tuning in. We're back from the break now. We haven't heard from anyone else for commenting. If you would still like to submit a comment, you can do so through the written public comment by, by following the, the notice listed on our website. Thank you for tuning in, and I'm going to hand it off to Melissa Hall, Supervisor in the Regulatory Development Unit, Division of Drinking Water.
So we appreciate everybody taking the time to provide comments this morning, and we'll be carefully considering those as well as the written comments that are due this Friday at noon. Before we take any further action, we will be waiting around for a few more minutes to see if anybody else submits last minute emails or is inclined to participate. But otherwise, we are going to go ahead and close this hearing. And again, we do appreciate the time and interest, and we'll be very carefully considering both the oral and written comments we're receiving. Thank you.